I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the library of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this incredible day you've given us and just how incredible you are, Lord. We just pray that you'll be with our staff and be with each and every one of us as the holidays approach and keep everyone safe and be with us tonight as we deliberate with some items before us. And just, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this city and what a wonderful city it is. And we just pray that you'll give us some wisdom and guidance tonight on the items before us. And just, everything we do is in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right. I would again like to welcome you to tonight's regular City Council meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. And to start things off, I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson? Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Present.
Randall Harriman? Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Artis Kay?
Here.
Is Mark? Mark, are you on Zoom?
Yes. Can you hear me? Hello?
We're not getting him up here.
Test, test, test.
All right. We'll move ahead while we get the audio for Mark where we can hear him. Item four, comments from our citizens. This is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you come to the microphone. Please state your name and address and understand that we won't take action on anything that you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Items on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak while the item is presented. All right. No one? We'll move on then to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six is procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
A and B.
Second.
We had a motion for A and B and a second. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Carrier 8-0, and let the record reflect, Mr. Harriman is now here.
All right. Thank you, Randall. Thanks for joining us. Don't blame it on a traffic light or something, okay? All right. Item seven, we have a presentation. John Wilkerson's here. Pleased to have you here, John, with the Arkansas Municipal League, and he's got a presentation.
Thank you for having me. First of all, this building is magnificent. The last time I was up here, Kobe gave me a tour, and it's really, really beautiful. And the Christmas tree, it's like the whole building was built for that Christmas tree. It's a wonderful Christmas tree as well. Well, I'm John Wilkerson. I'm the general counsel and the legislative director for the Arkansas Municipal League. I've been in this job for 17 years. And as my title sort of indicates, a lot of what I do is surrounded by my time at the lobbying on behalf of the cities and towns of Arkansas at the General Assembly. Been doing that since 2015. I'm here today to present a distinguished legislator award to Senator Penzo, Clint Penzo, who I'm sure you all know. I first knew Senator Penzo back in his days in local government. So I know that he knows the importance and the intricacies of city government, and he showcases that every time that he's at the Capitol, every time I see him at the Capitol. We end up working on a really nuanced issue at the end of every session, it seems like. And I emphasize the nuance of these issues because the issues that we end up working on during the session are ones that not everybody understands the gravity of or the importance of, but he does. And we end up getting involved in a lot of land use issues, and he understands why these issues are very important, especially up here in northwest Arkansas. And he always does his level best and always very engaged and interested in doing the right thing, especially, like I said, on these issues and among other things that he does up at the Capitol. This year in particular, he stood up for a small town in a very, very big piece of legislation. And it was sort of a foregone conclusion that the legislation was going to be passed, but he listened to our concerns and he understood the nuance of why this piece of legislation was important and why it wasn't as originally drafted, at least in the best interest of not only that city but of all cities in Arkansas. And he stood up there in the well, I remember, at least one time, maybe twice during that debate on it and had folks listen, had the Senate listen to his concerns, listen to our concerns. The bill ended up slowing down. It was amended. It did pass. I saw some problems with it. But if it weren't for Senator Penzo standing up there face to face with everybody and showcasing why this bill was bad for this particular city, but also bad, could be bad in the future for other cities, I remember that very vividly and it's something I'll never forget, watching those debates as he was standing in there in the well to make that point and drive that point home. So to be able to be here and award him the distinguished legislator award is in honor of mine. And so with that in mind and on behalf of the municipal league and hopefully on behalf of the city of Springdale, I'd like to present Senator Penzo. In honor of his demonstrated exemplary service, the benefit of the cities and towns of Arkansas to the 94th General Assembly, I present this award to you, Senator Penzo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just say it was a privilege working with the municipal league on this. A lot of the small communities get overlooked a lot of times as this one was being overlooked. And I was happy to stand up for them, even though they weren't in my district. And I appreciate you working with me on it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Clint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, we're at appointments and reappointments. And I'll go ahead and read this first one. A resolution making appointments to the Springdale Library Board, presented by Ann Gresham, library director. And then we'll follow up with another one just like it.
So we're here to present Debbie Keen and Megan Godfrey as new appointments to the Springdale Public Library Board. Our board had interviewed them and made the recommendation to Mayor Sprouse for his approval, and now we're here for council's approval as well.
Move the resolution be passed and approved?
Can we? Can we do both of them at one time? Or do we need to do them separately? Separately? So that's for the first one, Jeff. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 8A. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Carrier 7-1.
All right. Thank you. Ann, would you like to go ahead? I'll read the second one. 8B, a resolution making a reappointment to the Springdale Library Board.
And this is Lori Marshall, who's here with us tonight, and she has served one term, and we're here requesting your approval for another term for her.
Move that resolution also be passed and approved?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Roll call, Denise?
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carrier 7-1.
All right. Thank you, Ann. And Lori, and I know Megan's not here tonight. Please pass along our appreciation to her as well for willingness to serve. Thank you. All right. Item nine, planning commission report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item is a revision of our master street plan, and Ben's going to give you a quick update on the master street plan.
All right. Thank you. So the master street plan should be reviewed every other year. In odd years, we did it this year in 2023. It had been a little while since it had a major update. So we've gone through and taken out some of the more, the tabular form on the back page of this and created a document that I think better states the goals and the policies that we want to follow as we create this master street plan. And the master street plan, of course, is a map primarily, which is at the very end of this. So I'm going to go over there and then I'll come back. So there's the map. You were emailed a copy of this right before Thanksgiving, and then you have it in your packet. It didn't change remarkably from what you saw right before Thanksgiving. Really, the only difference is the flyovers over 49 at Falcon, at Harbor, at Apple, and at Watkins were under the blue line before, and so you couldn't really see that those were flyovers. Those have been changed to go over the top. We also added all of the prospective interchanges on I-49 and on Highway 612 that we think we'll want to have in the future so we can better plan for the way the city will lay out and will move traffic in the future. So this is the map. This is the guide by which we'll lay out all of our streets going forward as development occurs. And then we have a goals and policies that comes behind that, and that is what this document is. It starts with, you might recognize that. That's our Emma project that we just finished. It's kind of an overview. If you look closely, you can see the mile 16 sign. It's something we're pretty proud of right now. So this lays out the guiding principles and policies, which I've kind of covered. This is kind of a statement that was carried over from the last master street plan. Largest roads, federal highways, federal freeways and state highways. We don't really control those, but they do influence our system dramatically as to where we can have interchanges and where we have connections and where we have disruptions to connections. Railroad is another example of places where we have problems making connections. This is Arterial Street. Think of Jean George Boulevard or Don Tyson Parkway. This is the biggest street we'll have. It's a divided four lane with a median that will go away at intersections for turn lanes. Collector Street, this would be like Gutten Son Avenue or Turner Street, for example. Three lanes mostly to get you from your local streets to the Arterial Street so you can get where you're trying to go. Then we, this is a new one that we added. It's industrial and heavy commercial. This is for really kind of a subdivision street, but only in an industrial area. So there's not a lot of fluff to this. This is really about getting trucks and cars in and out of their businesses. There's no, there is a sidewalk, but there's no side path. Then we have commercial. This is more greenfield commercial where we're setting up new commercial in areas where space is not an issue and we can design the street that we want to have. So this provides all types of uses. Bicycles, pedestrians, cars, parking. It's all there. And this is downtown commercial. So this is kind of like commercial, but a little, it's lightened up just a little bit because we have a lot of space constraints when we're downtown. This is based on a 60-foot right-of-way, which we have in many places downtown. Some places, we don't even have that much. So this, put the bicycles in the street with the cars, cut the traffic speeds down so that we can safely put the bicycles in the road. And this is kind of what we'll launch from as we redo the downtown streets. This is the local section. This is what we'll have in all of our subdivisions and future local connector streets. We've only, we used to have two sections. We've dropped it down to one with parking and one without. No real changes here as far as width or right-of-way width go. And then we've created alleys. We have one-way alleys and two-way alleys. One change to this is we used to not allow gravel under any circumstances. We're now having a gravel provision with ribbon curb to kind of keep things a little bit cheaper and to allow infiltration so we can eliminate as much impervious area as we can. So those are the sections. These are design criteria that the engineers will use as they design these roads for us and as the develop, for us and for the development community. And that's it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Where were you saying that gravel would be an approved surface?
It would only be in alleys, which would, and not in commercial areas. Commercial alleys would still need to be paved if you're going to have truck deliveries and that kind of thing. This would be, think Harbor Meadows. If a new subdivision like that came in and they wanted to do rear access alleys, gravel would be an option.
One other thing to note, when this was on the committee agenda and in your packet, it's actually in there as a resolution. It should be as an ordinance. So you have before you a revised document that is an ordinance. It's an ordinance adopting a revised master street plan for the city of Springdale, Arkansas. The procedures were the same whether you did it by resolution or by ordinance. The statute gives you the ability to do it either way. We believe that doing it as an ordinance gives it a little more teeth. It's filed at the county land records. So that's before you, as I mentioned, it went through the same process it would have gone through if it had been an ordinance from the beginning. So just wanted to read that for the record. I've read the title of the ordinance.
Move the ordinance pass?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, council?
Just one other comment. Sorry, I didn't mean to. There is no emergency clause on this, so it would give folks time to digest it before it goes into effect.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments on this? Okay. Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Carrier 8-0.
The next item on the agenda is, an ordinance was on the agenda as a replata Spring Creek Farm subdivision. I'm asking that to be tabled. They really need to change the names of the streets that were approved. The previous plat that was approved had the wrong street names on it. We don't have one in the office yet, so I'm going to ask that you table that one or I'm going to withdraw that one, and we'll get it to you whenever we get the proper documents to support the street names.
So to January 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second to table to January 9th. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Carrier 8-0.
The next item is a rezoning request to rezone 0.92 acres located at 3724 West Sunset. The request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. The planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Harriman? Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 8-0.
And as the usual case, they have emergency clause because there are pending actions on these properties. The next request is to add 17.25 acres to the planning unit development, which is the trails at the crossings. This request was reviewed by the planning commission and recommends approval. It makes the total area of the pud to be 39.99 acres. I can go over all the details of the pud if you want to see them, but it's pretty much the same. It's the same building style. It's the same amount of open space. There's a few more trees than we got the first time. So we've changed it a little bit. There's a couple more amenities being added to it. The access, there's cross-sections between the two. Does anybody want any of the details off the pud document itself? Okay. Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Planning Unit Development, PUD, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Okay. Motion second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions? Anyone in the room need to speak to this issue? All right. Seeing none? Roll call?
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next request is to rezone 9.723 acres located at 1609 North Old Missouri Road from Industrial District I2 to Light Industrial District I1. And you can see the area there that's highlighted that's part of its rezon and part is the conditional use permit we'll talk about in just a minute. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Industrial District I2 to Light Industrial District I1 and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that ordinance be passed and approved?
Okay. A motion and a second to approve. Anyone in the room need to speak to this one? Having questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next item is a conditional use that goes along with that rezoning request. It was rezoned from I two to I one to allow for a conditional use for a use unit forty eight, which is automotive machinery and equipment, open display, retail sales. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this, uh, conditional use request. Uh, at planning commission, we were a little bit concerned about whether or not all the uses in that, uh, facility could meet the parking requirements. After them submitting some more information and going through the calculations, I think we have plenty of parking for them to use as a conditional use. They're going to use it to store containers on. There will not be anybody coming in other than to pick up the containers and take them back to that location. And we determined there was enough parking on the adjacent to handle the other operations that are going at that location. So this conditional use would not have any additional conditions as it usually do. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for United Rentals at sixteen oh nine North Old Missouri Road is set forth in ordinance number forty thirty.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Anyone in the room? All right, Denise?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Carries eight zero.
The next item is a request to rezone six point six acres that has recently been donated to the city for the expansion of the Bluff Cemetery from SF two to P one. And this is at six oh six Mill Street. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium density, single family residential district SF two to institutional district P one and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or concerns, comments? We've got some, uh, James, we got the all of these roads done or just a portion of them? Okay, all right. And we're waiting on pricing on fencing? Okay, all right. Anyone else in the room need to speak to this? Roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone point five acres located at twelve sixteen and twelve sixteen and a half Critter Street and three fourteen Gaines Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from general industrial district I two to medium density multifamily residential district. Uh, planning commission recommends approval of this zoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general industrial district I two to medium density multifamily residential district MF twelve and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any questions or comments, counsel? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone point six eight acres located at fifty eight seventy six Elm Springs Road. The request is to rezone the property from A one to general commercial district C two. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A one to general commercial district C two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone sixteen point five two acres located at fifty six seventy one Apple Road from A one to thoroughfare commercial district C five. Planning Commission recommends approval of the title of the ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A one to thoroughfare commercial district C five and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone point three three seven acres located at five oh one Northwest End Street from, uh, low, medium density, single family residential district SF two to low density multifamily residence, residential district MF two. Planning Commission recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium density, single family residential district FS, SF two to low density multifamily residential district MF two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Is that a, uh, is that zoning for like a duplex?
Right, same density, four units per acre, but allows a duplex in addition to a single family home, yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
It allow, it's the same density, it's four units per acre, it allows a duplex or a single family. That's the only things that, the only thing that's different, it allows a duplex.
And apparently they're wanting to build a duplex or more than one duplex on this property?
They only have room for one duplex.
How does that fit into the surrounding, uh,
Well,
community?
There are other duplexes along Christian Street as you go both directions. I'm sorry? Along Christian Street. And I think there's even one to the south on West End. I know there's some, the further away you get from it, there's some on West End. I think to the south of it.
Was there any opposition?
No. It's a vacant lot, the house was torn down. Uh, the duplex would, would probably, will have to face Christian and won't face West End, there's not enough room. The drives more than likely, they could have one drive off of West End and one drive off of Christian because there's an existing drive on both sides right now, I believe. But the density's not any more than it was at S F two, it just allows for a duplex instead of a single family home. I know there's not enough room for two. There's barely room for one. Because it is a corner lot. With a corner lot, you get two fronts. So you have thirty feet on two, two sides and eight foot on the side. So it's not going, it, that's all that'll fit there.
Okay, we had a motion, a second. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone one point seven two acres located at the northeast corner of McGray Avenue and South Fortieth Street. Uh, the request is to rezone the property from neighborhood office district O one to general commercial district C two. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from neighborhood office district O one to general commercial district C two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone six point eight three acres located at thirty one sixty two North Thompson. The request is to rezone the property from medium density multifamily residence, residential district MF twelve to general commercial district C two. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from medium density multifamily residential district MF twelve to general commercial district C two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
The next request is to rezone ten point seven three acres located at forty seven eighty five East Non Tyson Parkway. The request is to rezone the property from agriculture district A one to general commercial district C two. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number thirty three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A one to general commercial district C two and declaring an emergency.
I made the resolution pass.
Is there any C two around that area right now? I mean, it's
Right across the, the, uh, roundabout has been rezoned to C two. If you remember, they came in as, with a C five request, the planning commission denied the C five request and they came in with this downgraded C two request for that. Yes, we did a couple of months ago, probably. There's been a business at that class, a landscaping business at that location a long time. The other one, and they requested to rezone it to C two.
I'm sorry, I didn't hit my mic. This is pretty close to the park, isn't it?
It is, the park is just to the west. And then there's property to the east that belongs to the city for, that was donated for a fire station.
The, looking at this, uh, picture, it's got, we're talking about the purple area that's got stripes in it, right?
Correct.
What's the yellow, with the yellow stripes?
The rest of it was rezoned to multifamily district last month. And I, maybe on this one, let me see. MF twelve.
Are there any plans for what's going to go there, any idea?
Well, anything that's allowed in a C two zone can go there.
I understand, I understand.
We have not seen any development plans at the location, but anything that's allowed in a C two, which is, you know, more of a scaled down commercial zone, you know, you can't put anything in with a drive through. You can't put, you know, we're talking about neighborhood type activities. Uh, if you go out to the park, there's a long ways to come back to get food or something to drink and so there's, there's a lot of people out there and there's a good place for that. The dog park's right next door. There's a lot of houses out in that neighborhood.
About to get a lot more.
Yeah.
Any opposition?
No. And it was unanimous vote.
We don't, we have a motion, but no second.
Second.
Now we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Yes.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Order carries five three.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Emergency clause carries eight zero.
The last item is a request for waiver of subdivision regulations in, uh, connection with an informal plat for the division of the property located at thirty seven twenty five Maestri Road. Uh, Mr. Harwell is proposing to, to divide it into three lots, what makes it qualify as a subdivision. We all know that one twelve is one of those projects that is under designed by the highway to be funded by the highway department. The planning commission recommends that the waiver of the subdivision requirements, which is all the street improvements, be approved. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of subdivision requirements that's set forth in ordinance number thirty seven twenty five to Maestri Road in connection with LS twenty three forty three and informal plat for Harwell Family Trust.
I'm sorry, what did the planning commission recommend again?
Planning commission recommended to grant the waiver. Option one, yes.
Move the resolution be adopted, passed and approved with option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, Patsy. Item ten, finance committee, um, see Amelia, you were on Zoom. Uh, you want to take this or, who took it at the meeting? I didn't know, but whatever you want to do.
That's fine, I can take it. Are you okay with that to death? Okay. Okay, we will open up finance committee. First item on the agenda is a resolution, I'll go ahead and read it, to authorize a subward to business and industry training from the city of Springdale's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to help fund costs associated with increasing city of Springdale, Arkansas, participation in their workforce development and drop chain, training programs. And this is presented by Cody, the finance director. If you guys have any questions.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adopt. Any questions for Cody? Okay, I know we went through it pretty well at committee. All right, if, anyone in the audience? Okay, if there are none, then we'll go ahead and vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Item B is a resolution authorizing the grant of easements to the Arkansas Department of Transportation over and across property owned by the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission, Benton County, Arkansas, and concurring with the amount of compensation related thereto. This was presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney. If anyone has any questions?
This, uh, as I mentioned at committee, uh, the, uh, RDOT has, uh, is acquiring right of way across property owned by the Water and Sewer Commission. And, uh, it's unclear whether council approval is required, so be on the safe side, we're asking that the, we're requesting that the council, uh, adopt this resolution, just to make sure.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion, a second to adopt. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Recuse.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Carries seven zero with one recusal. If Mr. Harwell had stayed around, he probably could have stated that reason for this much better than I did.
Yeah. He kind of got his deal and got out it, didn't he? Uh, Craig, go ahead, Amelia, thank you.
Sure. Item C is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire land from ESO Properties LLC for the senior center project, twenty three, twenty twenty three bond project, number twenty three BSC one. And this was also presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. This is for the second parcel, second and final parcel to be acquired by the city for the senior center project. It's actually on, is it Baggett Street? We actually closed on the other parcel yesterday. Then this would, uh, allow the city to pay, uh, the same compensation per square foot as was paid for the other parcel.
Let the resolution pass.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anyone in the room? All right, Denise?
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Item D is a resolution authorizing the purchase of various city vehicles. This was presented by Colby Fulfer, Chief of Staff.
I'll answer any questions if you have anything that we didn't cover at committee.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. If there are no questions, anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Item number, or item E is a resolution amending the twenty twenty four budget of the city of Springdale, Arkansas. Again, this was presented by Colby Fulfer, Chief of Staff.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, great job, Kobe. All right, item, uh, if, Amelia, yeah.
Yep, and I'm probably going to massacre this name. Uh, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for consultant services with Nishak and Associates for design and construction services for Parson Hills Drainage Replacement. This was presented by Ben Peters, Engineering Director.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Denise?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Yes.
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 Alan carries eight zero.
Five people vote, it's eight zero.
And that closes the finance committee.
Thank you, Amelia. Uh, item eleven, Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Mike Lawson, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week, we had one item before us, it is a resolution, uh, it's kind of just picking up some of the major projects we did as part of the twenty twenty three bond. But I'll go ahead and read it. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of fencing dugouts, benches, and other field improvements for the Springdale Parks and Recreation Department. And like I said, it's part of the twenty twenty three bond project number twenty three BPP six. And it was recommended for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adopt this resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you, Mike. Uh, and now we move to item twelve, ordinance committee and Chairman Mike Overton, Mike?
We had one item, uh, come for ordinance committee, which was, uh, uh, moved forward to the council for recommendation for approval. And this is an ordinance amending chapter fifty, the floods, article two, flood damage prevention, section fifty dash twenty seven, amendments of the Springdale Code of Ordinances, declaring an emergency and other purposes. And this is just recognizing the fact that FEMA has redrawn our flood control maps for our downtown area.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item thirteen, police and fire committee, uh, Chairman Brian Powell, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one resolution come up before us on last committee meeting. It was forwarded with recommendation for approval. Uh, we retired a K nine officer and we're looking to get another one, uh, using, um, drug seizure funds. And I'll read the title of the resolution is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a K nine for the Springdale Police Department.
Move the resolution be adopted.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, thank you.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes ma'am.
Fuggerus.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 13, Police and Fire Committee, Chairman Brian Powell, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, we had one resolution come up before us, our last committee meeting, it was forwarded with recommendation for approval, uh, we retired a K-9 officer, and